I'll see that, please work it out. I know we have a forum and we have at least one member of the meeting. I was going to call this meeting quarter. I said, I mean, you can be standing. Just saying the question.
The United States of America. And to the real public, for which it stands.
When you're on and or thirty times.
I'm here. Hi.
Um, I know our. I am long. Spinning.
I was just gonna say, before we get to the first item on the agenda, I wanted to just say, welcome back. I hope you guys all had a good summer. Clearly, we read about all the incredible work you guys have done and watched a video on it. So we can't wait to get into hearing some of those, some of the stuff that you guys did. And also, for anybody that has not had the opportunity to swing by Greenwich High School, I know the majority of you are, you know, use the entrance every single day. When school's not in session, I suggest people go by and take a look. It's absolutely fantastic. And the building committee did such an incredible job. We do, you know, ribbon cutting the other day. So swing by and take a look. It's a, so finally, we have an entrance that equals the beauty of what happens inside that school and the great work that happens every day in those classrooms. So with that, I am going to get to our first item on the agenda, which is the 2024-2025 Assessment Schedule. Mr. DeMika, would you join us? And I'll hand it over to you.
Good evening, Board. You've had an opportunity to review the materials that we've submitted ahead of time. There's a couple of major changes to the assessment calendar that I would like to point out. The first is with the adoption of our new K-5 Social Studies curriculum. We now have unit assessments after each one of the units. So that was included as an adjustment in the assessment calendar. And the other one, which you might want to have a little bit of a conversation about, is that we are eliminating what we call the GPS Benchmark A at the beginning of the year and replacing it with the GPS Benchmark C of the year previous. And you might wonder, well, why would we do that? Well, the GPS Benchmark C, if we give it at the beginning of the year, which is the ability for teachers to see what was mastered in the year prior, allows then the teachers at the beginning of the year to get a jump start on any deficits that are seen. Whereas the GPS Benchmark A, which was always a bit of a confusion for parents because most students would score relatively low on the Benchmark A, and that was okay because the purpose of Benchmark A was to assess what exposure students may have had to on-grade level content. But since we give it at the beginning of the year, obviously, they haven't had exposure to on-grade level content yet. So the scores are relatively low at the beginning of the year. Not very actionable for teachers. We feel that giving the Greenwich Benchmark C allows us to intervene more quickly, which is always a goal of our instructional staff. So that is the recommendation that we've put forward in terms of a change to the assessment calendar. The other benefit to that is that we are eliminating then, obviously, the assessment at the end of the year. And why is that good news for our students in grades three through eight? Because they take the Greenwich Benchmark C after they just finished the battery of SBA assessments. So quite frankly, they're tested out. So we're not sure that really you're getting very good data anyway. So we always hear from teachers, from parents, from board members, that we want to try to be careful and thoughtful about balancing assessment hours with instructional hours. So although this may seem small, it's certainly a step in the right direction. I'd be happy to answer any questions because really, those are the only two, what I would call major changes to the assessment calendar from what we've presented in the past.
I was also gonna say, for those who were not aware, some of us had sent in some questions in advance on several of the items on the agenda this evening, and I know we got responses back. And I believe those will also be posted on Board Docs. There were quite a few questions being asked in regards to the assessment schedule and the summer curriculum work as well. So does anybody have any specific questions?
They are already on Board Docs, so.
Yes, I know. What, Mike, do you want to ask?
So I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate the swift reply to the questions and whatnot. I'm glad they're up online. So I guess somebody make sure I understand correctly. So summarize, basically, the former assessment in the fall was kind of like a pre-test. And instead of like doing that pre-test, the material that students are going to learn over the course of the year, we're taking the test that we used to give at the end of the year, the previous year, and doing that as a way of seeing what where students' masteries are at that level. Keeping in mind also that we've also then had a couple of months of summer. So any kind of summer slide or anything like that might also be reflected in that data. Is that, is that fair to say?
It's fair to say, you know, teachers always actively look for what regression may have occurred over the summer. And then they obviously want to take action for a recruitment period to be as short as possible. So having this data guides us very specifically to any particular skills that students may have regressed on.
No, it was funny because that was my, gonna be my comment too about switching that. It's giving the students that have that opportunity hopefully will also help with some of the, you know, the achievement, you know, gaps that we have to give students a better way to start the school year and figure out what they may have missed or lost over the summer. So hopefully, we'll be able to see that reflected in, in some of the data. Did you have a follow up?
Not on, on the assessment calendar, but not on.
I know I'd sent in a whole bunch of questions. I was just gonna ask a quick follow up because I'd asked, I know in the past, some of the past years, we've gotten the SBA scores back from the state late. I also know that, you know, you guys at the, you know, the district level do a lot of work and looking through those, that data and segregating it and looking at all sorts of different things. And I know you had said that those scores are coming earlier than they used to be, but they will not be able to be released. They're embargoed till the start of the school year. And I just wanted to confirm that when you say that, I assume when you say that you can't release the scores, you can't, you mean you can't release them to parents until the start of the school year? That our educators will have access to them in order to look at some of the, you know, slide and the holes that they need to fill in at the start of the following school year?
So we get access to the results pretty quickly. And it's obviously used internally to guide decisions about, for one thing, the, the work that we do during Summer Curriculum Institute, but also helps the, the district leaders look at where we might provide professional learning when teachers come back in the fall. And it also helps us set up how we will tell the story of the district's progress at the Achievement Report Meeting, which will be coming up next month. So, you know, I, I think it's great that the state has finally developed a system that allows a very quick turnaround. So yes, internally, we're able to see how students are doing. But we can't have those conversations externally until the embargo is lifted.
I just wanted to make sure for anybody that was reading the, the Q and A on the, on our website that, you know, on the, on Board Docs, that they understood that that was the difference in the question from what I'd asked to your response.
Clarify, so we're talking about the student level data. So you can go on the state website now and see the trends per grade level, things like that. But we're talking individual students, that's what's embargoed.
Right, yeah, I would compare it somewhat to, so you know, we have public facing documents for parents regarding our curriculum and what the expectations are. But then we have inward facing documents that is a teacher view, which is a much more granular level. It's very similar. So the, the internal view, right, allows us to do a student by student analysis of their performance on the statewide assessments.
I don't know if anybody else has any additional questions?
Mine is a little, it's kind of probably for another time, but it just made me think about it because it's on the assessments. And it's on the high school because we look at the standardized assessments and then we talk about midterm exams, AP testing and final exams. And having now experienced the high school, it seems to vary by teacher, how we do that weighting based on if it's an AP class or not. And I'm not sure it's something that's probably prime time for a conversation here, but I think it's something that maybe we should be talking about just earlier rather than later because I know in the past, it's sort of fluctuated from year to year for good reason. But I think it's something that maybe we should be involved in that conversation, especially because it does, you know, it, it's, the kids should know like going in, I think. And they often do, but it does vary from class to class, what the percentage is allocation is going to be.
Do you want us to engage in, in that conversation?
I'm happy to, because if I'm incorrect, I'd love to know that.
Mr. May, do you want to come up?
Are you, you're talking about the weighting of the tests?
Yes, and that's why I'm on track for today, just like when I saw.
Grades that AP and honors classes get.
No, 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 the weighting of the allocation. So like some, I'll just be clear, some AP classes, well, and for good reason, might say, we're not going to give a final. You're taking the AP exam, right? So we're going to wait the midterm, you know, as if it were the final, for good reason. I get it, because maybe you don't want to double down. And some might say, some AP classes say, no, we're gonna give a final, right? And then the allocation would be reflective of that, more in line with how the rest of the high school is doing it. And I think that's fine, but I think it'd be good if we were consistent on that. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Have any examples for me?
I'm not gonna call out specific, but like, so, and I probably shouldn't have raised it in this forum, but I actually think that it just made me think about it when I saw it in this manner, that it's something that would be helpful. And I know we've changed the allocation for good reason from year to year with COVID and then not COVID, and then the weighting of the midterms. And the greater of, one year it was the greater of, right? With your, the midterms versus the finals. And that was also interesting, all good ideas. I'm just saying, as a board, maybe we should be having this conversation or we should just know earlier if things are changing.
That's fair enough. So I, I think the takeaway, if, if I'm hearing you, is that you're wondering if it should be a more consistent practice across the disciplines. Okay.
And, and maybe it's just an AP issue, maybe that's the only issue.
So just, I was gonna add in, so the, and I remember when my kids were juniors and I was like, you know, they, in AP courses and, you know, or sophomores and juniors and, you know, the, the class sort of ended after AP because they've, that is their final. You don't really get that until your students are seniors because they have the AP tests. And then they leave because they're doing senior internship. So they can't really, there's not a lot that they could do to teach after that or then additionally have a final because the seniors that are in those classes aren't there. So that's just a piece to add in, which I had not honestly thought deep enough about until my daughter was a senior.
That's, that's a good point, so maybe that's the reasoning for some of it. That's a very good point.
Yeah, well, that's, I think that has a lot to do with it.
That's the case.
Does impact how the, the allocation of the grade throughout the course. And that's just important to note. But I think the teachers are always very clear with the students, to be fair upfront. It's just that it does vary from class to class, not by section, to be clear. If it's math, everyone's doing it the same way in math. If it's science, everyone's doing it the same way in science. I'm not by section, no, sorry, to make that clear. But it does seemingly vary from discipline to discipline based on perhaps a decision the department's made. And that's okay, I just think it's important that we all are aware of it.
It's, it warrants an internal conversation with the team.
We'll be happy to discuss that with the program.
Yeah.
We should have subjects to make sure it's consistent across the board period.
Nobody else, I, I has one at the moment. I was gonna ask a specific question because a bunch of the questions I had were on grade level were in regards to FLESS, the foreign language. And I know that there was a significant change to how we are delivering foreign language at the elementary, during the elementary years and a change in staffing it for foreign language at the middle schools. I know it may have passed by many parents. So I don't know, you know, if maybe Dr. Jones can sort of go over that because I know I asked a bunch of questions because I saw a lot of shifts in assessments in world language and, and, and some of the other pieces. And I think that will also help frame that, that discussion. And I know there were some questions in regards to that, which is not an assessment discussion, but I think it's reflected in the assessment scheduling.
Yeah, so I think you're talking about the world language shift in the K-5, four, three, four, five, depending on the building. Last year, for the first time, we brought all eleven of our principals together around the table to talk about elementary schedule, what was working, what wasn't working, what we need more of, what we need less of. And this was an outgrowth of that whole entire conversation of working on elementary scheduling. And we've gone in and shaved some minutes off of world language on, on every grade, depending on which building, oh.
I have to hold it down? Oh, I forgot, it's been the summer.
We're not a special time.
I know, I was thinking this was great. So we did go in and relook at the K-5 schedules. And again, whether you're a K-5 world language or a three, four, five, we've taken those minutes and depending on the building and what the needs of the building are, those are being reflected, the minutes that we've saved. For some buildings, they really wanted more time for reading. Maybe they had a higher EL population, they need more time for English. If you look at ISD, I was at their PTA meeting talking about this earlier this week. They're thrilled because with all the new pressures of the science of reading, we have huge block that is required for reading now in elementary. But what that's done to a building like ISD, where their International Baccalaureate, PYP program, it's put pressure on their interdisciplinary time. So they didn't feel like their schedules were meeting the needs of an IB world elementary school, PYP school. So they now, in their schedule this year, actually have interdisc time, but all of that time is coming from the minutes that we've shaved. And what I can tell you, I think those of us that have all been elementary principals have seen world language done a zillion different ways. We've, you know, been in buildings where we didn't have it at all, been in buildings where it was once a week, twice a week, four times a week. The reality is, those of you that have high school students or, or kids that have gone through the system know, you don't leave fifth grade walking in as a sixth grader being totally fluent in Spanish. You, you really want kids to go and feel comfortable with the language. You want them to have a skill set that they've been developing. If we thought that the shaving of the minutes would make a huge big impact, we wouldn't have done it. But again, we're trying to capture time for what the board has said is most important, literacy, mathematics, science, all those kind of core areas where we're trying to close some achievement gaps and look at instruction a little bit differently. So I, I think a little bit of that is reflected in here, Mark, and you can pick it up if I've left anything out.
No, I, I don't, I don't think you left anything out. And I think I, I would go back to the comments that I made in the spring when I think it was Mr. Kittle who asked me, you know, what would you take out of the school day? And my answer was, I wouldn't take anything out of the school day. I would encourage you as a board to consider lengthening the school day because we, we haven't, well, still, it was worth repeating. Here's the thing, our curriculum becomes more sophisticated to deliver. And as that, you know, evolves, you have to consider the fact that we're inside this instructional minute box and we're hamstrung. And so something has to give. And this is a creative way of looking for more instructional minutes in numeracy and literacy, or in the case of ISD, interdisciplinary exposure. We still believe, based on the changes that we've made during Summer Curriculum Institute, that we are providing a quality program to our third through fifth graders in Spanish. We will anxiously await the assessment results at the end of the fifth grade. Obviously, assessments drive decisions. And so I will kind of leave it there for now, as this is something new that we're exploring.
Ms. Costin?
So I just want to be sure I understand, are schools like JC and ISD seeing their foreign language indeed reduced? And are, you know, are they okay with?
Well, I will tell you, I answered a, a lot of emails over the summer because there, you know how social media is and people get on and it starts growing and growing. So I tried to, I met personally with the ISD, for instance, PTA in the summer. And I'm, you know, they were nervous, actually, as PTA, like, oh, how am I gonna answer the questions? I said, let me come and speak to the group, I'll do it for you. You don't have to answer why the district's making certain decisions. And I was, I was so pleasantly surprised this week. I really thought I might have some hard questions because usually that's PTA, that's just the way they are, not one. And I think because even before I got there, the principal, Dana Premender, had, was able to put the schedule up and they could all see, and their PYP coordinator was there. And they're, they literally are so excited about having this interdisc time back. But if you, the other thing we were able to say, which is wonderful, is also the changes that we've made in areas like reading and mathematics are paying off. So when you look at last year for like ELA for ISD, we were able to say, okay, the data goes back to 2017, 2018. This is the first time your ELA results for fourth and fifth grade have been in the nineties. And so I think parents also heard that, that, you know, we have a lot of pressure points. They ask questions even about things like digital literacy. And it's kind of like, well, this goes along with this whole pressure. Again, we're talking about with the schedule, we're also being asked to teach typing. We've been asked to teach cursing, like, we have all these things on our schedule. And I think we're listening to principals who are telling us what they feel like they need to meet the standard and expectation of the district. So no, they were fine, actually. It was a really positive meeting and I think because the staff are so excited about it. And as you know, at New Lebanon and JC, I mean, they have K-5 as well, world languages. I, I haven't heard much from those communities at all. And then, of course, the board knows that HEMAB chose to not have the K-1, two to focus on reading. And so they're real excited again because now they've not only shaved minutes in three, four, five, but they've also gained that time back in K-1, two.
Yeah, no, I, I see it. So I was gonna say, Wendy, I see your hand raised.
I, I'm just wondering, was this something that we should have voted on as a board since it's a change in the curriculum? Can you just?
Yeah, this is not something that we would bring to the board. The principals do their schedules. And when we set the schedules by minutes, and I think what's kind of confusing, especially if you're a newer board member, we had big discussions about PE last year. So the difference in PE is that came out, the Board of Education Budget Committee, because it was a budgetary discussion. And so we were talking about if we go from sixty minutes and we go to forty or fifty, whatever that was going to be, we are also going to be reducing probably five or six positions. And it was a half a million dollar decision. And so, yes, most of it was discussion about the health of PE and how we value PE, but that's why it went in that route. This is really about all the principals sitting around the table, talking about how can we create better schedules? And the board doesn't weigh in on the management aspect of creating schedules for the buildings.
Thanks.
Did you have any, do you have a follow up question, Wendy, or a question on another part of the assessment schedule?
No, I think, I think, I think everything is good. Mark's doing a great job.
Thank you.
My, I know, I was, I saw the hand about to go.
So, so switching, so on assessment, but a, a different topic. So it seems pretty clear from, but related, from the assessment schedule and whatnot. You know, when we talk about reading and literacy and all the shifts that you were making there with science of reading and things, it seems very clear in K-5 that we're measuring regularly and charting students' progress. And we emailed a little bit about this. Could you, could you and the team talk about after grade five? Like, how do we do that? How, how do we continue to chart students' literacy progress to make sure? Like, case in point, like the, the kid in eighth grade that might be reading at a sixth grade level who's not necessarily classified, or even the student who's entered, enters high school and is not proficient on the eighth grade test, you know? So how, how, how do we continue to monitor their progress once the days of, of running record and things disappear?
I appreciate the question and I think I'm gonna let Ms. Palladino come to the table since we brought everybody out tonight.
And I might just tell the board while she's coming up, in your packet, question eight, pretty much answers that question in, in detail if you're a reader.
Hi, everyone. So in middle school is really, we're really measuring comprehension at that point, where we rely on our end of, end of SBA, end of year assessments of our fifth graders and our end of year assessments going into middle school. We rely on our end of unit assessments and also our Lincoln forms to identify students that are not meeting where we expect to be at that point in the year. And we kind of use that as our universal screen, as we would say in our MTSS process. And so students that are performing below that benchmark, the school data teams will take a look at those in addition to teachers that might refer a student because they're concerned about their performance in class. And then we have literacy specialists at each building that can do more diagnostic literacy assessments in all five areas of reading to determine why a student may not be able to read a passage, answer text dependent questions, and showed skilled reading through, through that. So we have, that, that is what we do at the, at the middle school level. And with our good MTSS processes from the elementary level, we're identifying kids much earlier with reading struggles. So usually, by middle school, if we've had them, we have identified that they need extra support and/or we've closed the gap already and/or we've referred to special education to, to get further testing and, and to identify the need for more specialized instruction. So the, the caveat is our, our new students. And when we have those students, our, our buildings are aware of who, who our new students are. And the first thing that they're gonna look at are those screens that we give. So that's the difference.
At the high school level, though, we, we just, we do, I know we've talked about this before, but that's, I know.
I mean, I can't answer questions, but I'm.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just, I don't know that there is an answer to the question. I think it's like, we talked about this, I want to say in the spring, that there's this kind of falling off of data. And I, I would assume that it's probably true of all public high schools in Connecticut, that we don't really know what happens to kids, like, in terms of we're not checking in on their ability to write well and read well, like throughout, you know, we just have the SAT basically at the end. And we don't have any standardized testing that we're doing throughout. Is that, I mean, is that accurate? And is anyone kind of trying to figure out how? And I don't mean it within GPS, I'm saying is, you know, sort of within the educational ecosystem, is anyone trying to think about, like, it doesn't make sense to try and have more testing to track kids in the high school years?
It's an interesting question that you pose, but I want to clarify that I don't think we have kids walking around at the high school that we're not tracking or that we don't have data for. I think that's where our local formative assessments do a really good job of targeting performance based on the content that they're being exposed to. But in terms of adding on SBA, say, nine, ten and eleven, I, I don't think our high school students would be a fan of that because I think they are gearing up towards the SAT and more, more importantly, the advanced courses that they can select.
I was gonna say, I see some of the heads of departments and our principal there.
Mr. May, you can feel free to come on, come on. We brought you all the way out here tonight.
No, the subject area is the benchmark assessment at the end of the year. So there's no, we're not dropping, the ball doesn't drop at, in March when we give the SAT.
I think what Ms. Kovan is saying, should we petition the state to, to put in an SBA for ninth and tenth?
I'm gonna be the, I'm gonna be extremely unpopular with all high school students tomorrow. So just to clarify, that is not what I meant. I just was saying, you know, it's interesting that there is this kind of statewide testing protocol and then it ends at the high school level. And I'm, I fully appreciate all of our teachers in the high school are doing formative testing and tracking our students, but it's just something that we've brought up in previous conversations. And I think it's sort of an interesting point that we then looked at the APs and the SATs to give us that data later on. But of course, we do have the testing and I, I know that you're tracking every single student.
But this board, not this board, but a previous board made a decision, I don't know how many years ago, to replace the SBA at the high school level with the SAT. That was a decision that we all made to, because it made more sense for the high school to do, to take the SAT. But also, Mr. Hoyt's science program is giving the NGSS in May, at the end of May, and a thousand kids are taking the AP exams. So there's lots of testing going on.
Okay.
I was, I was also just gonna say, I was gonna say, I see, I see a lot of our department, high school department, you know, subject heads back there. And I was gonna say, I was seeing some, some of you sort of, you know, saying that clearly these students are tested on a very regular basis and, you know, or it's being, all that data is being looked at on a, you know, I know they have.
I'm happy to have someone come up and walk you through some specifics.
If anybody would like to, I'm offering the opportunity.
Lucy, why don't you come on up?
I think sometimes it's helpful, though, when we provide concrete examples. So maybe, Lucy, you can take us through the eyes of a ninth grader.
Take us through what?
Take us through the typical ninth grade assessment through your content. Take us through the typical ninth grade assessment through your content area. What, what a child would be expected to complete in terms of assessments.
So in ninth grade, English and social studies, early in the year, they do take an SAT-like benchmark to see where they are in terms of their SAT skills, their critical analysis skills. And with that data, the teachers then determine, you know, which students need additional support and, and what that targeted support would look like throughout the, throughout the year. Then, then there is the, in addition to, you know, formative assessments and unit assessments throughout the course, there's the January exam and the June exam, which also provides assessment data related to reading and writing skills as well in English and social studies courses. And, you know, we're specifically talking about ninth grade. That does happen in 10th grade as well. In junior and senior year, it really comes down to the, the formative and unit assessments and the exam. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Yeah.
So yeah, and I, I, so I'm listening to all this and I think it all makes a lot of sense. And I, I wonder if it's worth conversation amongst the team. You can all tell me that we're wrong. You do probably lots of times anyway. They, but around if, so assessments, we're measuring different things, right? We're measuring content, whereas measuring SAT skills, we're measuring different, there's a lot of different assessments that go into the high school and things. Is there a need for something more quantifiable? Like, there's lots of different tools out there where we could understand and look at our incoming ninth graders and say, okay, well, this student is at this lexile level, you know, he's actually reading at a seventh grade level. This student, you know, is, is one grade level behind. The student is two grade levels above. The, something around where they are in their literacy progression that can take a snapshot of where they are in, in September and how they've grown in, in December or at the end of the year. Now maybe the, the, the SAT assessments are doing that, the, in a way that we're, we're comfortable with. And maybe they're not. So that's why I'm, I'm wondering if we need something kind of like IXL does in math, something that is more measurable and specific that, that uses the, the skills so we can, we can track students' progress in a more quantifiable measure. Because there are, does exist in, in a lot of areas of, of six, 12. So, so, so maybe that's not a gap here, or maybe it is. So like I said, just put that up there because it's a retreat as, as a wondering.
Yeah. And unfortunately, Ms. Barry couldn't be with us tonight. So I think I'd like to take that question back to the team and, and have that conversation. Thank you.
What do they use in the state of New York, Dr. Mark Anthony? I didn't know if you had a suggestion.
I do want to say too, I, again, I think we're very, very data rich going all the way through middle school. And so because we're such a large high school, we also have so many different avenues for students who we already know are coming to us like that to go right to a reading class or support at the high school. And within those classes, they do have those unique assessments. We have a whole range and we've done a lot of training with teachers over the last couple of years. So I just, that may be a bigger conversation to better understand the programming of the high school because it is such a large high school and they offer so much. And their MTSS process, I think, is really, really going well.
And I was also going to say, for those of us, and there are quite a few of us at this table who have high schoolers here and/or have been high schoolers here. There are more individuals, more individuals looking at our students at the high school level than I would say arguably at the elementary, middle school. You know, you have a single classroom teacher at your elementary school looking through, you know, different form, formats. But at the high school level, we have, you know, each individual classroom teacher, they have, you know, group meetings. We also have the guidance counselor. Things, you know, go up to guidance counselors, you know, heads of the house. There are people that are also keeping an eye on students if they see. I mean, you're making, you're looking at me confused, but at least that was my experience. Like you have a student who's, you know, has a drop in something or looks like they're struggling. And the students also are given the autonomy to reach out for that type of support. And parents access, can access every individual test score or homework score, you know, through Aspen and so forth. So there's a lot of eyeballs per se on the high schoolers in that regard. So at least, you know, I can, hopefully other high school parents here will, will chime in. But so I think that's, we, we, there are a lot of focuses. I know that's not exactly what you were talking about, but there are a lot of safety nets put in there.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. And, and when we look at the, the spectrum, right? It's a gradual release of responsibility. And certainly by high school, we expect our students to be independent learners and, and, and have the ability to advocate when they're in need of additional support. Whereas our kindergartners and first graders, it may seem like we're giving them quite a few assessments, but it's purposeful and it's by design so that we have the ability to intervene quickly with the hopes that we can remediate and put them back into general education without providing additional supports for years after years after years. We don't want kids living in tier two and tier three support. We want to intervene quickly. We want to be swift with the, with our response to additional instruction. And then we hope that that instruction is responsive to the learner and the learner is able to, to, to eliminate the need for the additional support in a short period of time. So, yeah, we front load a lot of that diagnostic work because we want to intervene early before problems grow.
Cody, and you, we're on the phone, so I couldn't see if you had a hand, do you have any questions? No.
One comment when I was listening, which is you were talking about the budget committee process. It's an excellent way to inappropriately implement policy. Anyone gets any good ideas?
Well, so I know you're still in the hot seat for the next.
I'm not going anywhere.
The next discussion item on our agenda tonight. But I was gonna say, I know in that you're, yeah. So I just, thank you for, for coming up. But I just know that in the responses that, to the questions that I know that I had asked, and I guess and others. And Dr. Jones had also just used the comments that we're really data rich. And I know that, you know, some of our retreats going forward are going to be reflective of data. There's a, there's a power strip right here, Kathleen. There's one, no, it's literally plugged in. Any hootles? I just realized I'm plugged into this and this isn't plugged in either. So which one of us is, anyway, so, anyway, I'm hoping that we have the opportunity when we get our, on the future retreats, when we're doing a little more diving into the data, get, get to get a little, get our hands dirty and sticky and hear how we're doing in regards to our strategic plan, yearly goals and, and so forth.
Well, we are very much looking forward to our October meeting with you when we present the achievement data. We're very excited about many things and we look forward to that conversation.
I think we got a preview in this Q and A, so I was excited. But if nobody has any other questions regarding the assessment schedule, I will roll over to the next agenda item, which is the Curriculum Institute update.
So I thought this year might be helpful to kind of couch the purpose of Summer Curriculum Institute by creating an introduction in the document for you. Just to frame, why every summer do you bring teachers together with administrators to revisit the curriculum? Shouldn't the curriculum at some point be finished? Well, the curriculum is never finished. We're always looking to receive feedback from the teachers who are implementing the curriculum. We're always looking at the assessment data that also gives us a good indication of whether or not adjustments need to be made. And, you know, we're really purposeful in not trying to interrupt learning. So the best way to sit down, revisit curriculum is to do so in the summer when it's uninterrupted time, rather than pulling teachers away from their students, which I'm not a fan of. So the Summer Curriculum Institute is incredibly purposeful. And I'd like to thank all of the leaders that are sitting behind me for leading such wonderful work this summer and for all of the teachers who participated and gave up part of their summer. Because really, there's no other time to do this important work. And as you can see, quite a bit got done this summer. So with that, if there's anything that's particularly interesting to you, we have everyone here. They'd be delighted to have a couple of minutes of fame by coming to the table.
Well, delighted. I, I was gonna ask a
I use that, that word loosely.
I was just gonna ask, like, for anybody who was part of the summer curriculum team who wants to come up and answer what it, you know, what thing that you worked on this summer that you feel we're most excited to talk about and/or you feel is going to be the most impactful for our students? Just because so much was done and this summer, I'd love to have the opportunity for you guys to highlight some of, some of your highlights.
I'm assuming, Karen, they're all raising their hand with great energy.
I see everybody chomping at the bit, elbowing each other to be the first one up here.
There, you want to come up?
Ms. Fogel, our K eight science and K five social studies coordinator.
I am very excited to share that we have a robust and beautifully written K five social studies curriculum. I can say that K 12 did social studies work this summer, but in overseeing the K five work, I can't imagine it gets better than that. We had a team of teachers, educational consultants, both from our primary resource, but also from the state to help us do that work as well as myself. We had teachers come over the course of six days. We had literacy specialists in the team. And we created lesson guides that teachers are, we blew their socks off. Like, they are so excited to be able to implement the lessons. We were creative, we were inquiry and project based. And there is a lot of changes. We, we took a lot of things that used to be in different grade levels. We moved them around and change is hard and teachers know that change is hard. And we provided them with supports that it doesn't feel scary or hard for them right now. So they're excited about it. I think our kids will be excited about it. And I just can't wait to see it in the hands of our students. Second to that, and you know, social studies is second within my heart, but during the summer work, it was number one. Second to that, Sean and I partnered and brought together a group of six through 12 science teachers for the first time in a while. And we looked at vertical alignment around some science and engineering practices that we historically underperform on. And we created a district-wide inquiry and investigation template that's scaffolded from grade six through 12. So all of our science teachers in middle school and high school are using similar templates with language that gets more sophisticated throughout the disciplines as we matriculate up to 12th grade. And having teachers from six, seven, eight alongside nine through 12 of all the different disciplines was so fruitful. And the teachers got so much out of it. We had them come and present what they had created back with the crew at our first days back in August. And we had our six through 12 science teachers, 50 of them. We got them all up doing a thinking task for the first day of PD. Fun videos and pictures are somewhere on phones that maybe we'll get to share. And they had an absolute blast and they really liked digging into those templates. They're already using them. I keep getting requests in the documents to make copies. They're excited about them because it means that a student who matriculates through Greenwich Public Schools has a science education that is really done purposely and intentionally. So we're not looking at different formats. It's one less hindrance for students to really move forward and get in the work. So I think I speak for Sean and I both about the excitement around that.
And I know there was mention in the presentation on, that's on our board docs as to the forward-facing documents for parents to be able to, to see all the good work that you guys did and what their students are going to be able to, to learn about this year.
Yeah, anyone watching at home, I definitely recommend checking out the social studies forward-facing documents because the units are new, the topics are new, and we have a lot of resources in there. So please go ahead and check them out and you can always reach me for questions. Thanks.
So I just wondered, the grade eight historical fiction unit has a book club option. Can you explain? Do they?
Yeah, I can, I can bring him up.
So what was your question? So, you know, a, a book club is, you know, something that is, you know, typically done as an optional thing. But I'm just curious, like, do they have to pick a book and then form a club? Like, are you students reading different things? Like, how does this work?
So we got, we implemented new reading curriculum two years ago. We got feedback from teachers as to where, what kind of revisions they might like to see. We also revised our pacing for eighth grade, especially after we introduced, reintroduced a, a unit about the memoir night prior to the trip to Washington DC. So as we thought about that unit in particular, we wanted to put it after that unit after Washington and then have an opportunity for our eighth graders before they go to the high school to have a more social and more a unit in which that they could dig in to have some more choice in a novel that they read. So they will have an opportunity with their teacher to kind of think through after they've studied World War II throughout the memoir. They've studied American Revolution in social studies. They've studied different time periods throughout their time in middle school. They can pick a time period in which they feel, you know, most interested in reading some historical fiction about. And then they get to work on some selected texts by the teacher that are, that are the same so that they can read about different time periods through the lens of character development and plot and theme in a fiction, you know, arc of story. So that was an option that teachers were really excited about. It gave an opportunity for more work by the students and less whole class novel by the teacher driven because there are multiple of those in eighth grade. So it was a great way to end the year before they go off to high school. Thank you. You're welcome.
I don't know if anybody has any other specific questions or we have anybody else that was part of Summer Curriculum Institute that wants to, you know, come up here and shine?
Yeah, well, that's why I was, I just figured I didn't know if anybody had questions before we rotate through it.
Can I brag about my other work and then I'll?
Yes, please. I, I, we'd like to hear.
So in ELA, we did, we had two main focus areas. One on parent-facing, forward-facing documents for parents. I know when we talk to PTAC, when we talk to schools, when we talk at these meetings, parents want more opportunities to know what's going on, how they can help their students. So after rolling out new revised reading units last year and writing units this year, we had a team of teachers in K two come in to, to create parent-facing letters that go home at the beginning of each unit that kind of describe what's going to happen in reading and writing in this unit. What are some things you can do at home to help and support your students? Some coaching guides for like when your child is reading, what are some things you can say or do to support them? So those are in K two. We also updated all of our forward-facing documents for K five. And then also the other bucket that I'm really excited about is we got together our ELA teams in K through two and six through eight, because those are our most recent areas in which the curriculum management plan updated some of our units. And we got our media specialists together with our teachers. So they sat side by side, grade by grade. They went through every single reading and writing unit that they teach and got input and suggestions from the media specialist. So they created a document that will be used in the media department as well to support our teachers. So when the eighth grade, when eighth grade historical fiction unit that we just talked about is coming up, the media specialists know it's coming up. They can pull those books, they can do book talks if possible. They can support, they know what units are coming. So when they're ordering books for their media center, they can order that. And we had, we also have some, some new updated digital tools for research in middle school. So we talked about which digital tools might go with which units. In our PD day, we had our K two media LF present to all of the K two teachers, the work that was done, the digital tools that align to their units and how that they're going to start doing, being able to be more collaborative in the schools because now that they know what the new units are about. Six through eight, same thing. Our, our ELA teachers and social studies teachers got a presentation about the new digital tools and where they would align in the ELA curriculum. And I think they're going to start to do that work in social studies. So it's not even about the document, it's just about this new forged relationship that we can, you know, work together in our media departments and ELA. So those are the big exciting things from this.
Who wants to, who's next? Come on down. You're the next contestant.
Good evening, everybody. The nine, 12 science team was very busy. We had a lot of things going on. We were updating a lot of our curriculum documents as we were really focusing on horizontal alignment last year, and we wanted to make sure that all of the, the work that our teachers were, were doing within our PLCs and our collab groups was, was getting updated in all of our curricular documents. was, was getting updated in all of our curricular documents, um, as well as, uh, we, uh, as Tara mentioned, we, uh, we teamed up and we created an awesome template for all of our, our students to be able to utilize. We found some trends within our NGSS data, um, planning, carrying out investigations and analyzing some data. So, uh, we utilized that, uh, form. And then we got a lot new, uh, of new technology with Vranair probes and pocket labs. And, uh, we had a team of teachers go through that and, um, learn how to use all the different probes that we, uh, we, uh, were able to purchase this past year and then integrate those into that new template. And so, um, and then prepare to roll that out to all of our teachers, um, on for our first couple of days of school. And, uh, which our teachers are very excited about. Um, they, uh, I've, it was, it was pretty awesome because I had multiple teachers, uh, come up to us and be like, this was so much information on the first day, but this was awesome. Well, we love all the new stuff. So, um, that was really exciting, uh, because the first couple of days can always be a little bit stressful for teachers. Uh, when they have so many things to do, but to see the excitement on their faces with getting there to start looking at these tools and how they can incorporate, um, the new, uh, graphical analysis in their classrooms with their students or the new, um, notebook using, uh, pocket labs. You know, they, there were so many different tools that they had access to. Um, and with that, uh, template to help guide them and help guide their students, uh, they were, they were really excited. We also had some other curriculum updates with, uh, some changes in AP. So we had to take a look at those. AP Physics One has a new unit in fluids. And so our team was working on, uh, the pacing for AP Physics One as well as, uh, the, uh, AP phys, uh, fluids used to be in AP Physics Two and they had to pull that into AP Physics One. So they really enjoyed going back a little bit, um, and, and, uh, looking at the, uh, at the fluids unit. And then, uh, AP Bio also looked at, uh, creating more, um, hands-on experiences and adapting a lot of the assured experiences for, uh, to get, uh, more aligned with, uh, ECE and seeing how they can, uh, make it a little more flexible with ECE and AP. Cause they, they are taught together. So we were very busy.
Thank you. How about our new K 12 arts coordinator?
That was, I was going to go to arts next. Cause you know, it's my favorite. It is my favorite subject. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jimmy Antonucci. It's a pleasure to meet you all and I look forward to working with you as we move forward.
And you have two minutes.
Got it. So, uh, my second day in the job, we started summer curriculum writing. So we did a lot of work. There are a lot of strands in K, uh, K 12 arts. So the first one I want to highlight is our middle school art team. They came together and not only do they update, the national core art standards changed in 2016 before we had nine standards in, in arts. I don't want to say simple, but let's say focused. Now we have 137 categories, right? They're all mixed around performing, creating, responding and connecting. These are powerful, powerful core standards. But in those, there's, you know, 25 to 35 individual standards and it's a lot. So some of our curricular documents are outlining the philosophy, um, what we want to take away from our experiences, essential questions very well. But one of the things we need to, uh, kind of focus on is understanding what are our core content or skills that we're developing at each grade level and how those vertically articulate. How do our skills that we're learning in first and second grade eventually relate to what we're doing in eighth and ninth grade? So I started the conversation with the six, eight art staff, talking about what we call, but what I'm temporarily calling assured learning experiences, which of course here in this district means enrichment for our K five. Affectionately, the high school art team called it big stuff or curricular buckets. And in those, we have different areas such as 2D, 3D, mixed media, digital art presentation. And in doing those things, you're talking about what are the specific units we're going to progress through. And so as we analyze data from students as they progress, we know specifically how they're doing in each one of those areas and it vertically articulates as we hand off from one school to the next. They did an exemplary wonderful job with that. We brought that to the high school with, uh, AP art history. And we created that on a list, did an amazing job from scratch, in essence, creating a curriculum in the format that we've come accustomed to that Laura started a couple of years ago and did fantastic work there. Shapers, uh, which is a art history at the high school, continued once again discussing these assured learning experiences. And then I brought that into the K five group, which started that with K one, two, uh, thinking about that through their lens. So for example, for them, it might be painting and drawing as one of their big curricular buckets. And as we get to, let's say, um, high school, it might be experiential understanding of creativity in a context. So we have to, as a department, as we go this year and get ready for next summer, talk about how those relate and how they are vertically articulate. For the music side, the K five, uh, program, uh, they have done some amazing curriculum writing over the years. They really have, really distilled the fire around the system, which has 12 curricular units to begin with. And then in each curricular unit could be music literacy, could be oral learning, could be rhythmic, um, comprehension. There's a lot in there. They have so much documents. One of the things I challenged them to work on, and this is where I'd like to get to with all our strands and K 12 arts, is pacing guides and, uh, scope and sequence for all our teachers. So across every school, we're really kind of, uh, at the same point, at the same point, at each point of the year, in that we know that our students are assured the same experience wherever they are. I think that's really important. So they're at that process. So they had a pacing guide for all K through five. And then they also did a resource, because the other thing that I think we need to do is, is have exemplar lessons and resources at the fingertips of all our teachers that'll also assure common experiences across schools. And so they did that with K one and two. As we go to the middle school, um, level, um, we did not have a middle school, uh, music meet. We had, uh, another K five elementary meet that was Suzuki Strings, which happens at Hamaf. They once again went from no curriculum to a wonderful document that I'd say is 85, 90% of the way finished. The wonderful work that Lisa and Danny have done over there and the, the, the units that they already had there helped to drive them to be able in a couple of days, really complete a comprehensive curriculum, which was really amazing to be a part of. And then our high school music side, um, we had the e-music team, Jason and Barb, um, work on materials specific for student cohorts. So we have some students entering the songwriting, uh, class, which is a wonderful class in which they're recording and, and writing their own music. From the guitar class, which required specific materials, a lot of it is flipped classroom. They'll go in and differentiate by inflexible groupings. And you'll be have, they'll have a, a list of different skills that the students can work on where they can watch videos and teach themselves. And then they can work on a certain number of songs, record it. And through that, they get to the process of where they're making their own music. One of the ideas that they have is they would like to start a, um, school record label where the students, especially in, uh, e-music three and four, are producing their own music and records and recordings and putting them out. And, uh, a flexible grouping, but also a cross-curricular, um, kind of, uh, model. So they're starting to flesh it out. Some of the materials were, were there. And then lastly, Luke wrote, um, the AP music, uh, uh, music theory curriculum. Uh, and I do have to point out, he's had wonderful AP music theory results and his testing last spring, he did an amazing job. Those are some amazing scores even from a statewide perspective. Lots of fours and fives. It's fantastic.
Well, I'm smiling. Um, I actually have a quick question because I was gonna say, I, you know, I'm not sure if, uh, you know, our, you know, digital, you know, journalism and broadcast classes would fall. I know it's under technology, but sometimes falls under, you know, arts, I guess, and depending on what you're looking at. But I know we were putting in the new, uh, you know, sound boards and all, and then we quit them at the high school and the, um, press boxes. And I was trying to, I was wondering if we had, uh, built any curriculum to be able to use that in any of the classes over the summer.
That's a great question. And I, I think the Mr. Mayo that's not here is the one that would be best suited to answer that question. So let me take it back.
I'm happy to, happy to hear from Sean at some point. I just was, I know it was something we had talked about and with the e-music, I was thinking, you know, all the cross-curricular stuff that could be done.
There may be an opportunity in the future for that. Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Andrew Byrne? You might notice that Mr. Reed is looking fairly relaxed in the corner and that's because he, he has the enviable, um, position of being in his, what, third year of implementation or fourth, fourth year of big ideas. He did not have to do any summer curriculum adjustments for the first time. So instead of bringing Mike up, um, we are going to bring Andrew up because we did have some adjustments at the high school.
We did, and, uh, it's largely in part to all of you. And, and thanks again, last year, we spent a lot of time, as you know, looking at our resources that we use for pre-calculus and calculus. And you were kind enough to approve and help us with the adoption of those new resources. So the bulk of our time was spent, uh, in our pre-calculus, uh, AP and, uh, non-AP as well as our, uh, three calculus classes, uh, adopting that new resource or those new resources and, uh, making sure that our front-facing and, uh, inward-facing documents were updated for our teachers at the ground running. So, uh, that was, that was the bulk of our, our work this summer. We also did explore, as I mentioned last year in the spring, um, we're taking a look at the college board's pre-AP curriculum for our Algebra One, Geometry and Algebra Two. Uh, so we did some work around that and are, um, taking a look at that resource as an enhancement to our, our big ideas curriculum and the work that we've been doing, uh, through big ideas last couple of years. So another exciting summer for the math department. We're very proud of the work that the teachers have done. And, uh, we have some really great momentum and we'll be looking at some more electives in the coming years.
My two favorite, my two favorite math people, no questions. I'm just, I'm stunned.
Leave it to the math guy to do it in under two minutes.
And wait.
Well done.
And I can't wait until you guys see those AP pre-calc numbers.
Yeah. I think I'll bring, uh, Jeffrey and, uh, Christina up together so that we can talk about K 12 in its entirety.
I don't want to miss any. You didn't have any someone. Let me see that someone was.
There is. Hello. I could talk about the high school world language program in a minute. I just want everybody to know that today is Lucy Orecko's birthday.
Don't worry, we will sing a round of happy birthday for you before we like set you free.
She's fine with world language going first. Okay.
I for one is I'm excited about world language.
Okay, great. Do I have to push? Okay, I'm not going to touch anything. Okay. So at the high school for this summer, we focus on ASL. I know you have a warm spot in your heart for ASL, Karen. So, um, for ASL, the program is really growing a lot. Right now, I would say we have about 100 freshmen who have decided to take ASL one. And, um, as you know, last year we decided to add an ASL for honors, but our numbers were not large enough. So we had ASL three and ASL four and the honors all in one class. This year our numbers are so large, we actually had enough to have an ASL three and a separate ASL four. So it required that our teachers work over the summer to, um, really revise the curricula and think about what they might change to really make the honors component something special for those students. They're very proud of that. This year we're going to have the ASL honors, a part of the honors society for world languages. So that program is growing nicely. So that's wonderful news. Uh, we have been working for several years on aligning the native Spanish program from the middle school to the high school. That's still in the works. But we have our teachers really looking at different resources we might use to engage that population further. Um, our goal in the world language department is aligned with the school goal at the high school. As we are looking to raise the reading scores at the high school, we in the world language department are focused on, you know, interpretive communication. That includes reading, that includes listening. And so a lot of the skills that we teach in world languages reinforces what Bridget is doing and what Lucy is doing. And I believe that especially when we're looking at high needs populations like the L population, um, our students who speak Spanish at home, but that really is helpful. Not just in the world languages, but to support what they're learning in ELA and in the social studies department. So, uh, that's still in the works and we're still working on vertically aligning that curricula. I'm very proud of what the French department did. Uh, about three years ago, we got a new set of textbooks, uh, Tabronche. And so they've been working with those resources. Um, and what they actually, when Mark came to observe our classes, I showed him a template of a curriculum map that we were using. And I, I said, you know, this is really user friendly for the teachers. It's just kind of one-stop shopping with links to assessments, with links to resources, um, and assured experiences that these teachers were using. And so this year, the French department piloted it for us. And we have vertical alignment all on one document, going from French one all the way to AP French. Within that, they have the large concepts that we teach and the skills. And then a link to each curriculum map for each level that we teach. So just there in that one document, we have the entire French curricula. And we're very excited to present it to the rest of the world language department. And my goal is to have every language program have a similar document. I think it's a user friendly for new teachers who come in and also a nice way to just attach all of the important information, including the outward facing documents that we share with the parents. So that is what we worked on at the high school in the world languages and, uh, let Jeff talk a little bit about middle school.
Yeah. And before Jeff starts, I just want to publicly thank Jeff and his team of teachers who probably had the heaviest lift this summer. Obviously, uh, with the reduction of minutes, uh, the team needed to go back and look at the, uh, curriculum as it existed and be very specific and strategic about which skills needed to remain so that our students still received quality exposure to the instructional content. And I think what they were able to do in such a short period of time is really impressive and, and I'm excited to see it in action this fall. But I want to thank Mr. Shanker and his team of teachers who, who rolled up their sleeves and in a short period of time, really did, uh, some great work. So you can feel free to brag on that a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Um, I, I did want to start by thanking the teachers because they came in over the summer. And this was a, a big lift. Um, it's something that they were not used to and they really wrapped their head around it. They thought about what was best for the kids and they really put together a good program. Um, and so I'm very excited for that. So our K through five curriculum was revised. So what we did was we looked at the units that we had, we talked about, what are the things that are most important to the, to our kids? What do they want to learn? What do they want to engage in? And so our program has really emphasized interpersonal communication, speaking and interpretive communication, which is listening. So our kids will be focusing on those skills. Um, and our goal is, and we're really looking to see how our students progress with their proficiency is to add in some of that presentational writing when they get into fifth grade. Um, and as Mark mentioned earlier, we are going to look at the data at the end of fifth grade and then we will adjust based on what we're seeing from our students proficiency levels. With this new, uh, revised curriculum.
Thank you both.
Oh, I, I just had a 10 second question. It may not have had anything over the summer. So you can just tell me, we'll get to it later, but I was just wondering, uh, I know we had a discussion also, uh, on Latin, uh, some changes there. So I didn't know if there was anything that, any work over the summer. There was a reduction or merging of classes.
Well, um, our teacher in Latin did work on, we are combining a Latin two class with Latin three. Right now we have students enrolled in both of those. And that is something that she was familiar doing in the past. So, uh, there was no need for her really to work over the summer. But now that she has the students, she's working with them on, you know, meeting their needs and so far, so good. So we still have that going.
That's awesome. I just want you to make sure Latin students
And just so you know.
Their needs were being taken care of.
We're also offering online courses to any students who prefer that option.
Thank you. Uh, we have three people left. Uh, one is not going to come up because we hired him, Mr. Georgiou, uh, who is our KAP in health. Yet he didn't do any summer, uh, curriculum work based on the timing of his hire. He's here to learn so that next summer he can be first to present out. But we'll bring Bonnie up and then the birthday girl.
And I think that's everything.
Are you ready for two minutes of ALP? Here we go.
Two minutes?
You're on the clock, Bonnie.
Well, I don't really have a whole lot different to say because, because of the way that the ALP leadership team is structured, the ALP teachers are part of the curriculum work that is happening within the language arts, within the science, within the social studies and are incorporated. And so no longer do we have an out program that is And so no longer do we have an ALP program that is completely siloed from the rest of the curriculum. It is completely incorporated into what is happening in every classroom in, in the district. And so we work on, and the ALP teachers work on working with the complexity and working on raising the level for all of the students.
Fantastic, Bonnie. Okay, Lucy.
Should we all sing a round of happy birthday on, on her walk up or when she's finished?
In social studies, this summer, we took at the, took a look at the new AP psychology curriculum. The college board did change that course and the AP exam. So we had a team of teachers review that. Update our curriculum guide. Took a look at the units and how they would be paced and how we would assess in light of the new AP exam. This fall, we're going to look at textbooks and have a textbook committee to recommend a new AP psychology textbook. And the state of Connecticut rolled out new social studies standards. We took a look at those standards for American history, civics and global studies. And how they aligned with what we were teaching and made tweaks to our curriculum if necessary and updated our curriculum guides. And then we also created some SAT questions that go along with each of our required readings in the ninth and 10th grade to help teachers so that they would have additional practice questions that they could give students that aligned with our content.
Any questions for Lucy? I think your birthday gift is that you have no questions.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
So if I could, I just want to close with a little teaser for next year, something I've been thinking a lot about. And I think this will warm the heart of our new CFO. I think there's an opportunity for us because we, we always want to be good fiscal stewards of the town's money. I think there's really an opportunity for us to leverage AI as a purposeful and appropriate tool in some of the summer curriculum revision work that we do. What that actually looks like, I'm not sure yet. But it could mean a decrease in the number of teachers we need around the table to actually do the writing or edits. And we could be leaning into using some of the AI technology and using teachers more as the, the vetters of the content. So we'll see, stay tuned. Did that pique your interest?
Yeah.
There are. Yeah. So with that, thank you for your time. If there's no other questions and we really look forward to coming back and seeing you in October with our achievement data.
We can't wait. And I just an extra special thank you, not for all, just all the incredible work that was done and for all of you guys coming here. I knew school just started and it's wonderful to be able to see all of your lovely faces and just to say thank you in person. So.
Have a good evening.
Next on deck is the capital update. Come on down, Ben.
No worries.
Well, we have, no, it's not. It's plugged into the same one. But I was gonna say, we have two members of our, or three members of our budget committee. I know they're, they're probably very excited to hear all about this and ask some pointed questions, maybe. This, this room, just, just right there.
When we talk about this building, we can get to that point. Yeah. It's, it's on the list, so.
That's what I was trying to do. It wasn't, yeah. Maybe it's something, anyhow, we'll figure this technical difficulties should not stop you talking about the fantastic financial document we have in front of us.
Well, good evening, everyone. This is the first draft of the fiscal year 26 capital plan. Was close to 50 individual projects when you look at throughout the, the five, I'll say the five year event horizon. Sort of help organize it. We've created these categories. There's eight categories in front of you. So that first page is just a summary. Open to different categories, open to different projects shifting through them, but just another way to organize capital when you take a look at how do you get your hands around the sheer number and the sheer dollar value where we're investing in. And also where we have invested when you look at the prior two years. So just to orient you on that first page, we're really developing that shaded fiscal year 25, 26 as proposed. And then really want to start having the conversation. It's, it's year one. So your here is interchange, talk about year one or fiscal year 26. But also look at year 27, 28, 29, and 30. We've, the, the town in general has really focused on creating a multi-year conversation rather than just what are we doing in year one? What's on deck for year two? What's in the pipeline for year three? What's, what's out there in the horizon in year four and five? I think as you get past five, it starts becoming very academic. But I think at least the first five years, you start sort of having big placeholders on what you're trying to accomplish. The process, just as curriculum over the summer was very busy, facilities and finance over the summer was taking a hard look at all of our open capital, looking at the, the old 15 year capital plan. And we revised the budget numbers where appropriate to sort of escalate them. And we also did what we could to escalate them going forward. And we'll point to it, but a good example is if you buy the purchasing power in year one is not going to be the same in year five. So we tried to reflect a little bit of escalation of generally around 5%. Construction depends on who talks to, five to six, seven percent. But this is a planning document. I think that's the biggest piece to remember is it's a planning document. It's made to change and it should change throughout the, the years as we gain new information and the like. But I think the important document is think through the five years, really hone in on year one. And it's okay to change numbers going forward. This is a dynamic document. The schedule here, this is the first, first meeting, the finance committee will meet to go more in depth on this. According to the, the agenda plan, you'll see this in October 17th at the next retreat. At that time, you'll have all the project sheets attached to, to this document. And then you're scheduled for adoption on October 24th, which then we submitted to the, to the town for their inclusion and, and their budget process. So I'm happy to go through some of the, the category by category and say, I think no one in this room is bashful, so it's not me if you have a, you have a question. So the first new category is information technology. I'm going to that page two of the, of the document. Really, we try to make sure we have a program. So some of the things when you see, particularly when we see the numbers run out years five, and then you look at that page. I was hoping I would be able to up on the screen. So I see that some of you have our challenge with the eight and a half by 11.
I'll ask if Mike can toss it up for it.
As we're trying to, trying to get that up, when you look at that big document, you're going to see those bright lines, those bold lines. That really is the, uh, think about it in the five year tranches. So this GHS seller is a two year project. So you see prior year, we had that 625 that was there. And then we're asking, that's a refresh number, working with the CIO of 500,000 to finalize that project. But that's year two of a, of a, of a, of a project. After that, you look at sort of the network closets. They just need to update the HVAC throughout the district. And you take a look at the sheer number and what they're trying to accomplish, that you're just going to create a program throughout the year. Those are sort of the, the highlights, if you will, on IT. The educational program in our specialty spaces, again, trying to just create a category where certain items, particularly this, I think to go back to the category comment, a lot of the conversations I've heard throughout, throughout the town is, you know, how do, how do you, where do some of these belong? So I think at least when you start having these conversations about renovations to the locker room or stage or furnishing or athletic, you can speak to it in, in programming categories. But the big thing here is this is, as I was talking with Dr. Jones, this will be our third attempt to fund the furnishing and program space equipment. Every year it's been kicked out or dropped throughout the process. The first three years will be at the high school. And then in the, in the out years, when you see fiscal year 30 through the balance will be throughout the district. But every, the last two times we've attempted for the funding, it did not make it into the final capital plan for the town. You look, if you, if somebody is really excited, they look at prior year capital plans, you'll see stage renovation, locker room renovations. And renovate the gymnasiums were more scheduled for the year we're building. But as we work through this throughout the summer, based on the current number of budgeted projects we have on, on that. And particularly some of the leadership change, particularly with the stage renovation. You will have, we're, we're finalizing a district wide assessment. So those got pushed out into year two. So you have this year to really create a more thoughtful plan on the renovations.
Assume when we get the next round of information, we'll have more details to where.
Yeah, absolutely. The, the, I think some of the big conversation pieces will be in the next section, the major building renovation. I'll just take them in order. If you recall last year, Cardinal Field Improvement. The, this, the board did include A and E funding for the, the roadway on the campus that was eliminated from the final capital plan. So we are reinstating the A and E number for that and keeping that year five or fiscal year 30 where you see the 7.5. You know, that's the placeholder number for the, the project that's needed, but you can't have that number until you get the A and E work done. And that's not been funded. So I think one topic of, of guidance the administration is looking for is the road, roadway. Still is still a priority for the district. And that, that can be, you know, that'll be answered throughout, throughout our process.
Where's Central? Why is that not? It's two, it's two years ago.
Because it is already funded?
Yes.
It's in the back.
But it doesn't have like out year or I guess it's all funded at once and then, yeah.
When you, you have to have it all funded at once for the state. When you go to the state, you have to be fully funded.
Because this is only prior year. So I guess we did that two year, did we do it two years ago? We didn't do any for last year?
So the, it was an interim appropriation, which would not show up in the capital plan. So when we, when we balanced that first page, I wanted to make sure the numbers put into the capital plan. But the interim appropriation of 109 change was, was outside of this process. So, so you look at, when you look at that first page, 8655, right? Well, where's 109? It was outside of the capital plan. And I think it's important to keep the capital plan as a conversation versus the, the interims. And there's legitimate reasons of why the interim was done from a timing perspective.
Does that mean the capital for the real capital for 24 is like 200 million or it was 90, not 86 plus one, 109?
More than, more than likely, yeah. When you add in the, the one, the 106.
Well, are we also taking into account the money we're getting back from the state?
No.
I know, no, no, but if you're talking about what's actually outlaid versus what's coming back in, that's what I'm saying.
These are just the gross appropriations and that's, it's a good number. Remember that we're not factoring in the net or the, any potential grants or other revenue. This is just what's needed for appropriation.
We'll figure it out in our budget committee meeting.
We have Julie and Curtis, which is a multi-year, multi-phase project. And working with the building committee chair, we're putting in phase three for the fiscal year 26 and 27. That number may change depending on the progress they're making, but from as a placeholder, we, we put that in there to anticipate phase three is 2 million. But we think we can phase it from a cash flow perspective in, in year one and year two, a million apiece. But that number may be a little fluid. Phase three is cafeteria work. Riverside renovation. The biggest change here was we put in fiscal year 28. So this project has always, has been on the, on the list for a long time that Riverside is, has, the administration has selected an architect to begin the educational specs. As, as we all know, what the, the ad specs will then drive the scope of the project. Unfortunately, when the final capital budget was created, that 43 was dropped to zero. Because I think there was still lack, I'll say clarity is needed on the scope of the project. All I can tell you is it's, it's going to be higher than zero. So you need to include it in the capital plan, whatever that number is. So from a planning perspective, we are using 43, which is the same number that we've budgeted for Old Greenwich. Again, it's a planning number. But again, just to have capital discipline, it shouldn't be zero. So we're open to a number that anyone wants to put in there, but we think based on what we know, based on what the construction industry looks like. 43 is a good number from a planning perspective. No, no, I think to, this I think is a right schedule to go through the process, get the scope, get your, get your more of a clarity on budget. I think when, I think it's, don't compare the process used for central middle school. Just simply because it's an emergency basis, it gets a completely different, is the wild card compared to here. I think this is a model we should use where you do the, you do the, the educational specs. And then you do the, the A and E and then you, you have clarity and then you go out for, for bid. The administration building, this is, this is the building we're sitting in, the Habermeyer that has some power issues. So what we've decided to do is we still have it in the, in the CIP. This is a planning document. We did not include it in fiscal year one or fiscal year 26, simply because of the RFP that's currently out there for the relocation. But what we want, what we want to be very crystal clear on is something has to be done with the facility. And we're putting in a number in 27 and you can see in the out years, 31, 32, and 33, we have a placeholder. Regardless what happens, if, if, if a, if a course of action is, is not decided, I think in this, this fiscal year, the school year you, we have to start planning on what renovations are needed in this facility. Speaking with Dan throughout the, the process, you know, we have, we have been very limited because I think of the sort of the up in the air, what are we staying or are we going? But the decision has to be made. If we're going to stay, you, you're going to have to invest in this facility. And I think that's just, we need to make sure we have clarity on if the RFP generates and the decisions are made. And I'm, I'm completely oversimplifying the process here, but going forward, that's, we need to keep that on the books until a decision's made.
Just with the 600, what would that? Like how does that, how would that develop, that number?
That, that was a holdover from prior.
It was just a holdover place to get us through a review of feasibility. This building really needs to be looked at more on. I don't want to say historical factor, but this, we haven't really touched this building. There's a lot of things we have to look at, and it's not really. We're not going to have an ed spec that we have to match requirements from the state. So it's, it's going to be quite an endeavor.
That's, that's likely will just be current, do a current state analysis. What does the building need? What's the work to be done? What are the priorities? And then we would adjust in the out years based on those priorities moving forward. But it will become a project and the, the issue is we have not made this facility a project because of the, just the uncertain future. But I think going forward, we just, we're putting it out there, it needs to be a project if we're not gonna, if we're staying.
I would also just add that we'll know in November when the RFP is closed and we have all our responses, right? Is November the date that we will have?
I can't speak to that because the RFP committee has not met. Since we've had a number. No, I know, but I'm saying, so I don't know when they're, all the targeted days and when they're planning to meet to have those discussions.
Well, the bid opening is November.
I understand, but I'm saying I don't know how long they're left open for some of those processes, but the discussion hasn't taken place as to.
The good news is we don't really need to worry about it. It's a placeholder. Other things need to be figured out.
Not going to be voted on for this budget cycle, which needs to go in in October, which we're voting on.
And just another broad stroke, just to take a look at the, the placement of the North Street, North Myanis and ISD renovations. Just to make sure that, that fits within, I, I think the district's priority that we're, we're going to start after Riverside, the next couple, the next school is begin the North Street project. And then sort of concurrently, you begin North Myanis and ISD. But you can see where ISD is out there in, in fiscal year thirty six or year eleven of the plan. But just again, this is a planning document and just to sort of. You're setting expectations as well, and it depends on.
The current kindergartners will not, you know, be part of this discussion by the time it gets there.
I remember having that conversation when I first joined the board and my youngest was in kindergarten, like she won't see any of this and she's in seventh. And so, and she has not. So hopefully we can start cracking on some things. So she's like, I will not see central middle school. I'm like, you will watch it be built next to you.
But she'll get to walk through a new entryway when she goes there.
But this is keeping in line, I'm not going to go back and audit the fifteen year plan. It's keeping in line with what we did back in the day, just
Correct.
seven to ten years later.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Yes. If there's if there, no, nothing else on major building renovation, I'll, I'll jump to the next one, the MEP or mechanical, electrical, plumbing and utilities. A, a lot of this is going to be basic facility stuff. And that's a scientific term, but when you take a look at the plumbing and electrical, you, you just have a certain amount of work that needs to be done. A generator, emergency lighting, you can see that's sort of tailing off. But I really want to just hone in on the HAMAV HVAC. So assuming there'll be some conversation there. Just to set the ta, table there, that is the current working number for a replacement of the system. With the, the method of that system, whether that's geothermal or conventional, has, has not been decided. But that number is a, is the, is the gross number with no potential offsets of any grant or, or revenues. We, we have engaged AECOM, they've prepared the evaluation. And they're making a recommendation, the report, we anticipate will be presented to the, to the board at the, at the end of this month. And then we can start having the conversation, what, what the path forward looks like.
So, so it'll be here, right? So we think regardless of whether it's a, a traditional or geothermal system, it's going to be in the four million dollar range?
Yes. Yeah. Pardon?
Versus the HVAC at the high school?
Yeah.
But you gotta look at the high schools together, one point five, two point five, three point nine. So the bar is not.
No, I mean, it's a bigger building. It's a, it's a bigger building. That's why I'm saying it seems like, well, my point is relative, it makes sense relatively speaking, right?
And just the last two line items, as you referenced, the HVAC, you know, indoor air quality continues to be a priority for the district. You know, we've, we were fortunate to receive close to eight million dollars from the town ARP funding for, for HVAC. So that's, you don't see that in this document. But the biggest number there, and you see in fiscal year twenty seven or year two, that, that ten million is part, is, is almost exclusively Western Middle School. And that money, we received design money on ARP, so that's being worked on. But from a, from a phase, from a implementation standpoint, it's best to place it in twenty seven. Again, the project sheets will give you more detail, but we're not asking for anything in year one. But I think the key is we're, you know, indoor air quality does not show in here. You may say, well, I remember the eight million dollars from AR, town ARP is, is, is still being, and it's as majority of it's been implemented, but that's eight million dollars of indoor air quality that's occurred throughout the district. I'll just jump into building envelope. You know, that's a majority of the funding when you look at windows and doors and the out years is we took a look at the budget estimated for the GHS window replacement. And then we escalated it and then phased it out. So when you see those three million, seven million, five million, two million, a, a lot of that is GHS. And you have to face that, and we all know how large of a facility that is, and it's a significant undertaking. And so we're, we're finalizing the design on, on that, and then we'll have, but that's nothing in year one. But you see it's again, a planning document, the out years. Roofs are pretty self-explanatory. You, you need to maintain your assets. But so we have, we have the roof. The one thing we just want to highlight as well is the security entry redesign. Design funding was received in the year, so that seventy five thousand you see there was, is the year we're sitting in. The, we found the board received funding for EMS and ISD for their redesign of the front entryways. The design is much more complex than anticipated. We've doubled that number, so last year we were carrying nine hundred thousand, now we're showing one point eight. But we made sure we worked with our safety and security director that just the key here is nothing's being compromised by pushing the project out to year two. It's simply the design and making sure we, we do it right. It's, it's, it'd be premature to be asking for the funding now. We wouldn't use it, so the best placement is the year two or twenty seven. The, moving on to interior building, I think a conversation piece that the board has had has been ADA. And just to refresh the board's memory, you had a lengthy presentation back in March of this calendar year from Silver Petrocelli, where they presented the plan. As I think you know, that CMS and OG were not included in the plan because they're included in the building committee. New LEB is not included because there's relatively a new facility. Riverside, the report has, is, is done. We're just waiting for a couple QC or quality control issues and we will speaking with Dr. Jones, that report will be shared with the board through a, through a memo. I don't think it's additional conversations needed, but the, the back page you'll see is where they have created a point system where they've taken a look at the approaches and entrance, entrances, the access within the building, toilet rooms, and they ranked them from a priority standpoint. And what we, we did is then take their number from a rank order. They had updated construction numbers, we then just took them in order, presented. We removed Riverside because that should be included in the building committee project. And we purposely avoided the work for this building. This building actually will see ranked number one as the need for ADA. But given all the conversation we just had, we did not put funding in for ADA improvements for this building. But you'll see that number. We really tried to squeeze it in for ten years, so we have a ten year plan and the numbers have been escalated five percent each year. So when you do see the report, we tried to complete the, complete the ADA priority projects in the next ten years throughout the district. We removed, and that's why we lumped ADA and vertical transportation. We removed the, the elevators from the high school and put them in, beginning in year two, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine. And I think there, if I nerd out with you, there's just a classic example where you, you have the number of an elevator and we then apply an escalator. We're only buying one elevator at a time, so in seeing year, year twenty seven or year two, the one point three million, we're buying this same elevator in twenty eight, but just given the, so we've escalated again, just to have a greater clarity on the costs. But that's really just a really micro example of how we try to escalate the prices. I think that's going to be the, the, the nice thing is those numbers have been current. And then there's this, and we've, I think we, once the board sees the final report, we can, we can adjust if, if needed, but you'll see the logic that we, we applied. Exterior grounds. The, I think the biggest conversation point is right there in the middle, Western Middle School field lights, two point five. That is a new item. That, as you, as you know, the Western Middle School fields is scheduled to be completed end of this calendar year. The work has been done with this oil remediation project, the conduits and the pads were installed for future, for the future of field lights. As Dan pointed out, you had no choice but to do it just because of the soil remediation, or you probably, you wouldn't do this. So the groundwork was, was laid for the lights. But the lights themselves, the poles and the, and the wires come at a budget number of two point five. I think the conversation piece for the board is, is that an appropriate request coming from the Board of Education? Or should that be a request from the Parks and Rec Department? We put it here just to have that conversation, whether or not who has, is it an educational need or is it more of a Parks and Rec impact? But that's, that's something for consideration that when you, we submit your, your, your request. You, technically you can split it, I just, the law, the, the logistics of dealing with that is, is a, is it becomes two different accounts, two different ownerships. And I think it's easier to have the bucket, whoever's, whoever's point should be, it should be placed within their capital budget, but.
We should ask the athletic director.
I was actually, that was, that was what I was going to get to when you got, when you went down to, to slots, I had a question.
I, I mean, I would like to know the athletic director's opinion, but I mean, my experience with the middle school fields is that later in the evenings, they're used by private clubs and stuff like that. I mean, so to me, then that feels like a parks and recreation situation, right? If you have G Y L or whatever, you soccer, you know, they're the ones, they're going through parks and rec to use the field in the evenings anyway, right?
No, I, I believe, believe you're right. If you split the use of our, of our programming and their programming, our program is generally during the daylight hours. It's when the lights are needed. I think the educational programming or the athletics will have limited benefit. They will have a benefit, but limited. And I think ultimately is the question is do, when you look at all of the capital, do you want to include it in your request? Or do we want to have a conversation with Parks and Rec that they should have it in their request?
I guess I have a follow-up question, which is if, if there was lighting there, would the high school teams use that field? Because then it would be a good, yeah, the good thing for us to do for the high school to have more flexibility. And then, and then I would put it in our budget.
Look at his smile.
Well, while you're walking up, since you're talking about lighting in high school fields, I know we had talked about the, the pathway from the stadium back to the school. When it gets dark, even though we can't have lights up in the stadium for evening, but the students, that's a whole nother bit, ball of wax. But the walk for the students, or we have evening games for parents or whatever it is, that the walk back towards the school, the parking lot is not lit. And, you know, we were, at one point talked about like some ground lights, at least I had spoken about it with our athletic director. I didn't know if that was a request either.
I'm not sure if that's in there. I know it would be nice. I think you're referring to the path behind field two, which has been closed the last couple of years because of the construction. We do need, my opinion is we do need some lights back there, small pathway lights, just to light it up for safety going back in. I don't know where we stand with that right now. I wasn't involved in any of those projects that came out after that, but I do think it would be a great idea. More for safety than anything else, obviously, with the amount of people walking back there and the water being so close, not having a fence. That definitely should be looked into. In regards to the Western field lights, athletics would definitely use them, baseball and softball in particular, those two fields. I was slightly involved with the dimensions of the fields, and we did build them to NFH specs. So that could definitely be used at night for games for them as well. The fact that we don't know how the condition is going to be on our baseball field when it's done. Speaking for softball, in my last few years there, Parks and Rec did a great job keeping us on campus. We had to go a lot to Bruce Park, which isn't conducive for our kids traveling, they want to play home. So I'm assuming the field will be better than what it was before. But knowing some of our neighboring towns that have a synthetic turf for baseball and the option to put lights on, it does give us a better experience and less cancellation of games. I also thought of it as a point that we are limited to the lights at the high school. Now with all the projects going on with Central not having a, a field, if we had a field that was lit, we could, because the kids are older, we could push back some of the high school sports under the lights to allow middle schools to be able to use the field. So I don't see a downside in it. I do agree that with your comment, that Parks and Rec will be able to also use the lighting on it at night for games and on weekends. But it's something we definitely should consider doing because it will help us. Yes.
So just to make, make clear, so we'd be, we'd be trying to, we'd be, we'd consider using the Western Middle School lit fields for high school out of capacity concerns, increased capacity, not because of any existing agreements limiting likes at the high school.
Well, currently, right now, we, we do have limited at the high school, so we're limited to six practices a year for all our teams. The majority of that gets taken up towards the end of the fall season because our football season runs late. We're limited to daylight, so they take most of that. We have equitably split the games throughout the year. We have ten games that we could put on. So we try to provide as much as we can for all our sports that play at the stadium. The lighting at Western won't help us with our field sports because the field itself, especially under lacrosse, is smaller than the regulation field. It will help us with practices, but not with games. If we were able to use our lights more at the high school, that would alleviate some of the need for the Western lights. But when it comes to baseball, softball and practices, we definitely would be able to use those fields in the evening to allow middle school to go after us, and then we'll be on there too as well.
Who, who's the light, the restriction at high school? Is that in agreement with neighbors or is that a restriction from the town?
It's, it's a
One neighbor?
A neighbor and the, their homes, like the association that they were named at. But it's, it is, it's written in
A court, court stipulation.
Perpetuum.
But what if we went to the neighbor and just said, we'll give you?
Oh, no, 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 it's, we can talk about this later, but it is, that's.
I mean, there is an equity concern if we're actually trying to build lights on, in another neighborhood and around other neighbors because existing neighbors.
The Western field is backed behind, is the, the town dump is back there and then the bakery.
Or bakery workers.
There is residential to one.
There's a few, but not at the main area of the lights.
The other thing is, you know, I understand, I get what Pete's saying, but the lion's share of use after hours when lighting would be needed would be through parks. Maybe even if you had five or six games there at night, you still have, you know, seven nights a week that you can ramp it out. And from what I understand, there's a waiting
And just to manage expectations, I, the land use approval process would likely put restrictions on the use. So you, you, you don't, you don't have, you know, twenty four seven access to a field light. Land use will likely put on restrictions. So, but they have to go through the whole approval process, but we have to first figure out who's asking for the money.
This, because this is why we don't have
This, because this is why we don't have Friday night football?
We do have it, but not as much as other towns.
Fascinating.
So we can have a history lesson later.
You know, we could just do it anyways and just
Oh, no, no, no.
Do a budget line item for legal defense. Uh, come and get us.
Uh, we can have a history lesson later. I promise. Um, so I was just going to jump, had one question while athletic directors here, just to ask a quick question on sport court replacement. I didn't know, it just also come to our attention. I know when we were not taught, we had talked about phase two of the high school field and that tennis courts were, it was in discussion. And I thought we, have we, oh, Ralph's walking up. No, he's, he's like, I'm out of here for this. But I, I was under, under the impression that we may have come to the end of the usefulness of the life of the tennis court. See now Ralph is napping. So I didn't know if that was included in there.
It's the tennis court for Cardinal field is not included in, in that line item. Though, though we still have a placeholder in the Cardinal field improvement line.
Okay. So it's, it is in there, but it's different. Okay. Just because I think it's important to note that because we've reached the end of the life right there.
And that's a good example of a timing of you, it's difficult to resurface a field if you know you're going to move it into, in two years. So it's similar to like the Havemeyer facility, just can you, can the stars align, you know, the useful life is, you depreciate that asset and you're going to relocate it because of the, of the roadway driveway. But that's included in the Cardinal field.
Dr. Jones just came back in at the end of tail on that, but that'll be something I think we as a board should also discuss sooner rather than later. Not, not just at the high school, but the, the other projects that are all sort of on that line of do we, don't we?
And just the last, unless there's anything else for, uh?
Can I just add one thing? You talked about the lighting behind the stadium. That's currently not part of the project and we place in the fields. And we didn't put lighting in because we knew that was going to get ripped off. So that's.
Thank you.
Just the last comment I'll point out on the fifteen year plan is, uh, food service. Uh, we have our new food server director over the summer, visited all the facilities, our schools, reviewed all the equipment needs. And it is page two of the document. Uh, it's very robust. Equipment needs for the food service. I bring it up from a budget perspective. Uh, we've been used to having a fun balance and school lunch. Uh, school lunch both pays for the expenditures as well as the capital. Uh, with this, uh, you know, half million, almost on average, half million dollar request per, per year will quickly eat into any fun balance. And we revert back to the, the old days of a, of a contribution is needed to maintain the operations of, of school lunch. But I think it's the first time we've had such a detailed, robust, uh, school lunch equipment. And hopefully try to avoid the inter appropriation we had to do last year with the oven at the high school. And hopefully start ticking away at some of the repair and maintenance requests, uh, that we have throughout the district. But, uh, we've itemized all the equipment and tried to make priority of what, what's needed.
These estimates, um, gas, electric? Do we, do we know?
I think most are, uh, I believe, no quote minus, but most are gas. When you convert some of them over, like we were converting, uh, I forget which one at the high school, one from the other. It's a significant, it's not just a, no longer a plug and play of the, of appliances, a significant lift with just, uh, bringing it, bringing in the new service into the, um, the room. But, but that is looked at when they, when they go throughout the process. So that's your very, that's your first cut at the, uh, capital plan.
I can't wait to hear what happens when our budget committee goes in there.
I like how you did the categories. It's really well thought out because I think sometimes, and you came from the town side, so you appreciate it. It's nice when you put it in buckets because then you can more easily justify the various costs. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, and next on the, uh, next on the, uh, agenda is our enrollment update. Dr. Jones.
Um, what you have in your packet, uh, and that was emailed to you is the first day of school numbers. You know, basically I know we had, uh, some questions about this today, not, not very many. And it's really more about where kindergarten is either down or up in certain buildings. And of course, you know, I can only give you a kind of a qualitative kind of thought process from what I see that comes through my office. A portion of that is due to the pre K kindergarten age change. And when you look on that second page, the backside, you'll notice the projections only off by ninety one students. Um, more than half of that is this whole pre K kindergarten age change. And some of the up and down, I believe by what I'm seeing in working with our families, uh, in certain schools has more to do with housing and the housing market. Um, if you look at Riverside and O G, there's almost nothing on the market, um, for people to consider. So while we had a higher projected, projection in that building, um, the market is not really supporting to have the immigration of families coming into those schools necessarily. And then we, we were up in North Street. If you look at North Street and it was actually above projection where it was supposed to be last year. But again, really that number of ninety one is greatly attributed to that K five number and, and a chunk of that is kindergarten. Um, so you can see on that bottom right where the projection is for, um, all of our schools. So we're, we're pretty much where we thought we would be. It's not any different than any other year. Um, we did have to add a section at the last minute, um, for a grade level. And, but we had another, uh, position in the district. We were able to freeze because we didn't need that one. So, you know, right now it's not like, um, we're in a hole, which is good. We did have some movement across the district in order to close gaps where we were either to lower in one building and higher in another. And we had a couple of teachers that moved. Yeah. And that's done by seniority, then sometimes by teachers that want to transfer. So. Any questions on enrollment?
I know I sent mine over to you and, you know, having a little bit of a panic attack overlooking at the projected, uh, from last year to where we are, and a lot of it obviously was kindergarten and we had three schools where we've seen, we've seen a little bump, but I also did the math and on the positive, you know, last year we had six hundred and fifty seven, uh, twelfth graders who've exited our, you know, high school. Um, and this year we have five hundred and fifty nine incoming kindergartners. So it's the difference of ninety eight, which is pretty much when you look at what's projected, the difference there. So it does even out and we also have, uh, forty seven more pre K students this year. So.
Yeah. And I will, I will point out that, um, on the bottom left is our pre Ks. So we were supposed to have one class at cost Cobb, which was brand new. We've now gone to our sixth building. Um, but we have two and that we had to add a pre K section. The, and that pre K section was planned to be added in January. So we had to pull it forward to get it ready to start the school year. It is highly likely, and I would say ninety percent or higher that we will have another section coming in January, like we've seen, January, February, like we've seen in the last couple of years. We are getting very, very tight for space. We're looking at one building right now. That's simply because they are down in one grade level. They could take a pre K. But we are going to, within the next couple of years, unless the trend really changes, we are going to see pressure on finding space for pre K in the district.
Um, I, you know, I know when we're going to look at the, the, it's too early to discuss it now, but obviously at some point you guys are going to be going back through, uh, those that opted out, I guess, this year for kindergarten and pre K and those that are supposed to come in again the following year to sort of see where we're at. Cause my other concern is we're going to have a larger influx next year, maybe of kindergartners, uh, just looking at the numbers as, you know, compared to what was projected, uh, without the age change. So I assume we're looking into forward planning with that, right?
Yeah, we have those numbers where we've already looked at how many students were with us, um, that chose to go ahead and be retained in pre K on, by choice. Uh, what we don't ever know is the number of children that were out in the community pre Ks. And the parents chose to keep them back and they never pre enrolled with us. That's, that's the unknown number. But we do know how many actually did choose to stay back that were in our pre K.
Does anybody else have a question? No?
Just an align that same, um, line of questioning, like, did you see trends at different schools of how people approach that question of whether they were going to send their kindergartner or not?
I'm not sure I could answer that really good for you right now. I, because I was looking at overall numbers all summer. Um, I, we certainly have it, so I could go back in and look. But because they don't, they're not in pre K in their homeschool. So we have to go in and look at who those children were and then go look all of their addresses up. Um, so I'm really not sure, to be honest.
I'm just looking at these, oh, sorry.
Wendy hit it. Thank you.
Um, I was just, I'm looking at, it looks like we have, we lost thirty four kids at North Myanis. I mean, I, I know, I understand what you're saying, Dr. Jones, about the housing market and everything. But thirty two kids at O G, I mean, what are we going to do with the, with the capacity? Issues. I mean, are we going to put pre K kids there? What, that seems like a lot of kids to be losing from one or, you know, a few schools.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to be able to answer that question until we get into next year where like North Street was up. Um, you know, so we've talked about it North Street, we may be at the point, they have three pre Ks right now. We may need to move a pre K out of North Street and into another building, uh, which is one thing that we did this year in that we moved a pre K out of North Street and moved in the unique program and, and we flopped. And that's one of the, one of the classes that's at cost Cobb. Um, as we watch next year's enrollment, we're going to have to look at that, where the space is, uh, where it's available. And because like North Street was really high this year. So until we really see, you know, who enrolls next year, we won't know. I expect us to see a little bit of a spike.
Thanks.
Yeah, but it's, look, this is how they, because this always is, it's always gets reported wrong in the media. So the, uh, it looks like, looking at last year's report, if I did it correctly, the, um, we have about seventy five less kids in kindergarten this year than we did last year. Um, overall home is down only ninety four kids. So the, the, the big chunk of that is kindergarten.
Yeah. And then like the, the, the difference in the numbers of students that exited. I, like I said, I looked through and Wendy, I had the same question because I saw there were three schools that there was a reduction at, and it was all three of them was, were in kindergarten. And then I started to, you know, have a little panic attack. And then I was trying to realize these are the schools where the student parents may uh, hold their student back more frequently than not per se. And that's why I was wanting to make sure we look ahead for next year because they may all be coming, coming back. Because of the change in, yeah, for kindergarten entry age. That's, that's the main thing. And, you know.
Can we next year add a column into this file that just has the prior year enrollment? It just is easy to, yeah.
Yeah.
I just opened up last year's, but-
Yeah, we actually, we have like three different versions that grows with this. So that would take us back a little bit, but we keep all that data. So that's not hard to add.
Because I was looking at the projected numbers also for this year and trying to figure out why they were off. But it was also, that's why I had asked Dr. Jones, uh, because the Prada, you know, projected numbers came to us in September. There were, you know, September of twenty three for, you know, this year and going forward. And at that time they didn't account for the change in kindergarten age entrance, entrance age. When they made those numbers, which is why the, the kindergarten numbers were so off. Does anybody have any other questions on enrollment?
No.
If not, then we can move over to the school year calendar. I also sent some questions on that, which are in the Q and A.
Okay, um, school calendar. So this is actually, it was, it's a pretty challenging school calendar. Um, in that, you know, we have to fit in, um, a hundred and eighty days. And the bad thing about this calendar is we try to avoid as much as we can being in school the last week of June. Um, because quite frankly, it's really not great instructionally at all. Um, and it just, you know, it, it's just, it's not a great way to end the year. Some of the questions that I got, like why we're starting on Friday, which also happened this year, by the way, the calendar falls. I will tell you though, that, um, I, I mean, we had great attendance, pulled all the attendance on that first day. Everybody was there. Um, which was good by who, you know, who enrolled, they showed up. Most of our high school kids are already in athletics. Um, we do our orientations on the Thursday, which is the day before we start school. So I'm just reminding you that. Um, because even if we pushed it back to Tuesday, our regular gen ed students for the whole district wouldn't start till Wednesday. Um, and you have to make those days up somewhere. So our kindergarten, sixth grade and ninth grade all showed up on Thursday. So by the time you take that high school athletics, everybody was here. It also gives us an opportunity on Friday to go through all of those, you know, find your schedule, find your way around, have transitional, here's how we line up, here's how we go to lunch and we hit the ground running on Tuesday. So I, I actually saw it as a positive. Um, somebody, I'm just, I'm going to read through you because there's only like seven questions. Uh, why did we add P L D, uh, professional learning in November? There's an early release that we've added trying to make up for that election day, which now is, used to be able to be a professional learning day. Uh, we haven't done that for several years and, but we are finding we really need time. Um, we do this wonderful professional development coming back to school and then it's hard to be able to have time to follow up. Okay. How is this new unit working? You heard all of them talking tonight about the work they've done. Um, so an early release will still count as an instructional day. So that's why it's an early release. Let's see. Same way on December twenty second. Um, it's not ideal. If you look at December twenty second on the Monday, um, it's an early release because we know a lot of people will want probably to travel. But on that day, it's again, trying to get an instructional day, otherwise it goes into June. Um, and you know, we could, uh, do the twenty third as well, but then we definitely lose a lot of students that travel for the holiday. Um, so I mean, that's just something to consider, but that's, again, we were trying to find days.
Can I, can I make a suggestion on that one? I mean, I, I appreciate that the calendar is really difficult, though, just the way the dates fall. But I was thinking it would be better to have school and everyone can feel free to disagree with me. But it'd be better to have school on the twenty third and then not have school on the second, because I feel like, and actually you had this in your answer, like a lot of people, including me, are trying to get ready for the holiday and are happy to have their kids be in school on the Monday, Tuesday before going into Christmas. But I don't think anyone's going to be excited about coming back for the second of January because that, that's a lot of, you know, so many people have that time off and want to take that weekend. I just think the schools would be completely empty on January second.
It's a great catch. So swapping, um, December twenty third, making that a, a date of instruction and being out of school on January second.
Well, I would assume it was, no, you would make the twenty second a full day of learning and the twenty third would be early release.
Exactly.
And then the second we're off.
Yeah. So you have at least you have two days that week. And then you have a nice clear stretch where people can be away.
Well, people also then have that, it was, it's, it's the weekends that book it. So then, then they have the opportunity to come back and.
Exactly.
Rushing, yeah.
And the last big question I got really had more to do with, um, spring break, um, which right now was put on the calendar for that April, week of April sixth, which is early. Um, we could easily move that back a week. It was lined up with, um, Easter that weekend. Um, if we move it back a week, then we still have time before AP testing. And that's one thing that, uh, we would want to consider. So if you moved spring break, if that's what is preferable to the thirteenth through the seventeenth, that would give you two full weeks before AP testing starts on the fourth. And especially in high school, they really value that time right before AP testing, uh, to be doing reviews, making kids, you know, making sure our students feel really, um, supported and ready to go on May fourth, when those will start.
Now, I, I had just raised that because I had looked back at April break, the dates of that for the past over, over a decade. Um, or fifteen plus years. And it's always been like the week or the week so after, but yes, I see that it's, it's time more with Good Friday. But I think it's something the board can discuss and see how that overlaps with other, other things. Passover is the first, April first, the sundown. The first, first day of Passover is the second of April that year. No.
Not the Seder, but the rest.
Yeah. Again, that's something I think we can have as a, a, a discussion. I think there's to see what, what other things overlap with either of those weeks. Cause that's, that's usually how it's, uh, here from the public.
I'm sorry, can you just tell me again, when do APs start again?
It's always the first Monday in May, so May fourth.
Okay. And so is this usually the one that we do? Where we, where we give them the time between, but like the two weeks between the breaks?
That is more similar on our calendar. Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
They usually have only like one or two classes where they do review, um, before the actual AP test. So they, they don't need the full two weeks for review. They need the full two weeks to actually get in. They need the full two weeks to actually get in the the final parts of of their curriculum. Uh, that's going to be covered on the APs, but they, they do need time for at least like one day of review or some for, for, for class.
Right, okay. I I can't remember, it was so long ago for my son.
Was there any, any, anything in behind having the week before, so for responsible college?
It was really just lining up more with Easter and you know, often that's preferable, but there really isn't any reason, it's easy to move it back a week if people think that that's um better. The other thing I could do too is go out and just check our neighbors around us. Um, usually we're a little bit different than New Canaan, some of them. Um, but I can go and check and see what weeks they're going to be out as well. Um, we usually mix it up a little bit, which is nice.
It's always great for travel.
Also. It looks like you don't have to, I mean, it looks like you need to swap, you could have the week before Orlando for holidays and then go to Easter Monday.
Well, you probably wouldn't do it the week before and the end of March, because it's like only a few weeks that from it's so close to February break and then it overlaps with all of the other stuff here.
If you look at the New Jersey, New York calendars, they're all exactly.
But they also don't have the full February.
They don't do February break though, right? They do?
I bet all of Westchester has that down, has that week off.
Which week, the thirteenth?
The week, the first week, the last week of March, the week of March, the week thirty-first. I bet, I bet, I bet that's all Western.
I think one thing we also are cognizant of in this area too is just when like Sback, SBA and everything starts. Um, because there's a lot of pressure, um, March is a month that's tough, um, for especially the K-eight group. So I guess it, for me, it's just, um, we'll bring this back on our meeting, our business meeting. It's just, you know, do you want us just to, you want me to provide some more information? I can even just do that through an email, just like here's what it looks like and maybe by caucus you can get some feedback on what calendar you think, you know, looks more reasonable.
And then hopefully we'll get some public comment or the PTAs will weigh in on.
Yeah, I'm sure somebody will, uh, our PTAC liaison can, can alert them to this discussion and and get some input. Does anybody else have any questions on the calendar?
No, I mean, I also agree that there were people that complained about starting school on Friday before Labor Day weekend, but I also found it to be um, while, while a grind, I think it's a good thing because it gets you, it gets you going. So then when you, you hit the ball rolling on Tuesday, so I think it is.
Yeah, I I had put forward those questions simply because I had so many people who did not hear our conversation when we approved this year's calendar. Reach out to me and say, why are we starting on this Friday? This is blah, 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 blah. So I was like, well, it's important to have this discussion. We can have it again for next year's calendar. So people may be paying attention and and understand why that those decisions were made. Um, so if nobody has any other questions, um, if you guys have any input or thoughts, feel free to also share them. We'll go through caucus and you can share them. We'll get them back to Dr. Jones. Uh, so then we are on to the first read of the superintendent goals for twenty-four, twenty-five.
So last year, um, the board was not a fan of having all the priorities, so I left him off. Um, you.
We, we know they're still your priorities though.
Yeah, they're all, they're all still district priorities that we have to with the team that you saw here before. And it's just as long as it was last year, but um I didn't include them on this. So it's basically um where you're looking at the alignment of pre-K through twelve plus uh in our curriculum and resources. This year, obviously, we have our K-five. Um, you know, where we're implementing for social studies. Um, we're also trying to look at just all of our, uh, and that's why the assessment schedule changed, how we're actually approaching. You know, and listening to the teachers again, listening to our staff on what's working from a social emotional standpoint where we're not overtaxing children. Um, ample planning time for staff, that was a big, that's a big piece. We're still having, I had a meeting today with Will on that. Um, trying to make sure that every single, especially an elementary teacher has the same amount of planning because we had such a vast difference last year from somebody that would have five hundred minutes a week to somebody that barely had a hundred and fifty. And um, so we balanced all of that out and that's going to be an ongoing task. And then just the high level professional development, which meets the needs of the teachers. Uh, I would say, I think if you ask any of that curriculum team, they would have told you this is uh by far the best start, a lot of teachers have said in ten or twenty years they've been here to our professional development. Um, that some of the sessions, they just felt like were exactly what they've been asking for. And so we'll continue to look at district data, uh, trying to look at our gains and student achievement. Obviously, that's part of our strategic plan. Uh, we want to continue to have our rankings uh remain high because those have gone up each year. And again, you don't really know how they're going to calculate it. They tend to change a little bit each year, so we'll see what happens. Um, but feeling very positive about all of that. Um, the second one is really the fidelity of implementation of the special education plan. As you know, that is a huge portion of our budget. And we continue to implement that action plan. And uh, we've contracted to bring PCG back, so we'll have an external evaluator who did the first evaluation. And uh, Dr. Mellon will be here again uh with, she has a team of two or three other people. They'll be doing classroom visits, looking at all the program we've implemented. Um, and again, they will be giving us a report and it says on her before March twenty-fifth. That's really accounting for weather and things like that. I hope it'll be before then. Um, but they are traveling, you know, flying in, so I just, I tried to give us a little bit of room. And they're going to let us know how they think we're doing and everything we've implemented. And I will just say I have to um, talk about like the unique program. We're so excited because we made the change from Costco to North Street. We immediately now have five students and remember the, the program is capped at seven or eight students. So we went from one or two to five just by moving the program. And which is what we thought would happen because it's such a need in the district. Um, so we're really excited about that. Um, the last one is really looking at uh working with our entire team for me um to accomplish all of those priorities and I'll have a big chart that, you know, will be on my wall all year. Um, so that we're meeting all of those metrics um with fidelity. I, I will just point out on this one too. One thing you'll notice, um, so I've kind of given you a heads up before you see the uh October report. As we went in and started looking at the years and how they align. We realized the more people we got around the table. Some people looked at twenty-twenty-five as fiscal year twenty-five, some people looked at it as twenty-five, twenty-six. So when we actually started looking at the columns, what year did we set the data point? What year was the board working on the plan and what was our first year of implementation? So you'll see that's kind of been realigned and we feel better about how we've aligned it based on your input last year, so, um, and I could send that ahead of time if we were still working on the chart itself. Um, but again, we really, really good and excited about um the metrics this year. And then some of the leadership priorities, and again, this just comes from feedback from the board. Um, doing at least three legal briefings, which those would have to be an executive, but the board has seemed to really enjoy the one in the middle of the year where first we did special ed a couple of years ago. Then we added, well, you know, not enjoy, but feel more knowledgeable, I should say.
Well, we certainly get good uh, good data.
But also even ha- having Abby come and, you know, be able to talk about what are any legal issues that are ongoing that they can share with the board. But doing that at least three times so that you can get updates on, you know, if there's CHRO complaints that are outstanding. They won't be able to tell you the detail of who and that sort of thing, um, but just so you know what's happening. Um, then also just opera, those opportunities to visit all fifteen schools. We've done that the last two years. A lot of you took advantage of that and I would encourage you um to do that again. And um, if you're specific about something you might want to see, let us know. Because you know, we can arrange zero hour and go visit the research program with Andy Vermonti and the middle school students or the high school students in research or the electronic music program. You know, we're happy to take you to those pockets of the district that maybe that it's a little different than some of you did last year, walking around a K-five building. Um, and then the last thing is just check in meetings with me. Um, and I'll just send out, you know, open invites and if two or three of you want to sign up together because sometimes you reach out to me anyway when you're hearing things in the community or you know, athletics, or there's something going on um that you just have questions about, but trying to be a little bit more scheduled where it's not as ad hoc, so, and it may just be, just want to check in. So I've added all three of um those components in there as well.
I know that we'll, this will come back at uh, at our next regularly scheduled meeting, so I know if there's anything that members of the board want to share or or think might be important to discuss, certainly you can send them to me and we'll, I'll put together a whole document for you guys. Um, uh, the only other thing, I mean, uh, you know, I had so, was it, was that if, if anybody wants to send stuff unless there's something you wanted to suggest now.
I was thinking about, I don't know if we think about the wording or not, but I, I think some of the conversation around this table over the last year uh was, was it, was, wasn't as much around the um implementation of the program as thinking about the measurement of the effectiveness of the program, so beyond the audit. So I don't know if you might want to think about if, if that wording captures, uh, the current wording captures, captures that. I know a lot of what you, you talked about Karen, it was a lot about, you know, the effectiveness of.
Because it was also say, act, and that's uh entries in access data in order to review the current success of the special education plan. It says as conducted by PCG, but it should be the special education plan as conducted by PC and the overall program. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and, and.
And let me know if you want me to put all the priorities back on here again.
Oh, no. Please don't. This is, this is nice and succinct and hopefully like we used to have a a just a standing uh Western Middle School field update or facility updates at the top of our agendas. We can always have a standing thing where, you know, if there's anything to update us on if we're moving forward to, to reaching our goals, you know, or, or your goals, we can have a little update. Does anybody else have comments, questions, thoughts? Anybody want to talk about their summer break now? Okay. Um, the last item is a written report, which means we don't discuss it. It's continuing education executive summary. Um, so if everybody takes a look at that, uh, we won't be discussing it tonight, but you can certainly send questions to to Dr. Jones to share with Dr. Carabillo and she will get back to us on those. Um, other than that, I don't know if there's anything else. Does somebody have a, a motion to make?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your hand. All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you and I look forward to seeing you guys at our next meeting. And hopefully we'll uh have a date next week uh to set up an executive session to interview potential candidates to fill our empty seat. So we're looking to set that up.